This meeting to order at six o'clock. We stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please note that the agenda for tonight's meeting has been posted in accordance to the open meetings law. Uh, we have posted at the middle school and high school, the elementary school, on our school website, and at the public library. Prior to this meeting, we have sworn in our new board members. They took the oath of office, um, prior to the meeting. And as part of our reorg meeting, I will be opening nominations for our board president. Do I hear any nominations for board president?
I'll nominate Barb Rogers.
I have a nomination for Barb Rogers as board president. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
You have to ask for nominations three times. Oh, you're getting a second each time?
Um, so we have a nomination for Barb Rogers by Chris Schley, seconded by Chris Benish. For a second time, do I have any nominations for board president? Hear none? For a third time, do I have nominations for board president? Alright, I hear none. Um, so we have a nomination for Barb Rogers as president in a second. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Passes. Turn this over to Barb.
Alright, thank you. Okay, for the benefit of the fact that we have a very new board, and um, two brand-new members, and one that we appointed last fall and/or end of summer. Um, I'm gonna just quickly, um, read from our policies, because they're very short, the definitions of the officers. Um, for um, vice president, the vice president of the board shall act as chairperson of the board meeting by presiding at meetings of the board when the president is not able to attend, performing other duties appropriate to the office of vice president as the board determines, and in case of a vacancy in the office of president succeeding to the office of president to the balance of the unexpired term. Clerk, the clerk of the board shall act as clerk and record the proceedings of all meetings of the board, enter the proceedings of the board in proper record books, enter in the record book copies of all clerk reports sent to the municipal clerks, draw and record orders on the treasurer as directed by the board, be the chief election officer of the district with authority to report the name and post office address of each board member within ten days after his/her election or appointment to the clerk and treasurer, perform other duties as prescribed by law for the board. Treasurer, the treasurer of the board shall apply for, receive, and sue for all money appropriated to or collected for the district and disburse the same in accordance with law, enter in the account books all money received and dispersed, and specify the source of the funds and the person to whom funds were paid and the object of payment. Immediately upon receipt, deposit district funds in the district's name in a public depository designated by the board, and perform other duties as prescribed by statute or by the board. Obviously, the clerk and the treasurer positions, we delegate a lot of those duties to our district administrator, to our finance manager, um, and to the secretarial minutes, we will be appointing a separate secretary. But it's just to remind the officers that though these duties are allowed to be delegated the day to the, that the officers still have the accountability for everything that's listed in the statute. So, please go into these positions, um, with as much, um, knowledge as you can and be prepared to spend time learning, um, what the roles are and what the accountabilities are. Um, I have said this to the brand-new members in the orientation, but we are what's considered a unified school district, which is a little different than actually most of them, which are either union or common. And the difference is they have an annual meeting every year where a lot of different things are decided. We, because we are a unified school district, don't have that annual meeting, which again, gives this group a lot more authority. Um, and so, um, please remember that and, um, familiarize yourself with the statutes, with what we are allowed to do, what not to do. And of course, we are officers or just as board members, we have no power except as a group when we are, when we are actually speaking as a board, making motions and voting. So, with that, I would like to ask for any nominations for vice president?
I'll nominate Amy Johnson.
I have a nomination for Amy Johnson for vice president. Do I hear a second? There is no second for this nomination? And I will ask for a nomination for vice president.
Nominate Lonnie Fennendell.
Do I have a second for that nomination?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a nomination for Lonnie made by Chrissy, and seconded by Chris Benish. And I will ask for a third time. Any nominations for vice president? Okay, we have asked three times. We have the one nomination. Um, I will ask if there is a motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot.
My motion to close.
Okay, motion made by Chris. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Chris Benish. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations Lonnie. Alright, we will move on to clerk. I'd like a motion to nominate, um, someone for clerk.
I'll nominate Chris Schley.
Okay, we have a nomination for Chris Schley.
I'll second.
Seconded by, made by Chris Benish, seconded by Lonnie Fennendell. I'm going to ask again, um, for a nomination for clerk. And a third time, any nominations for clerk? Okay, hearing none, I will ask to, for a motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Chris Schley.
So moved.
Motion made by Chrissy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And finally, I need to ask for nominations for treasurer.
I nominate Chrissy O'Connell.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Nomination for Chrissy, seconded by Chris Schley. I'll ask for another nomination. And I'm actually going to make a nomination myself as well, um, for Jeremy, is it Pacheco?
Pacheco.
Pacheco. Do I have a second for that? I'll second that. Okay, since there are two. And, and the reason I was actually going to ask people to give their justification for nominations, um, I will give my justification because I know it is a little unusual to nominate somebody that's new to the board. My justification for my nomination is that, um, Jeremy has finance and budget experience. And, um, and so I feel that that would be an asset in this position. Nothing against Chrissy. So, when there are two, um, we need to do a secret ballot. So, we're gonna pass it out. And then, Chris, you will open and determine if we have. So, the two that have been nominated are Chrissy and Jeremy. And if you could please put down your selection and pass it to Chris Schley.
Condemn one by one, pronounce them one by one?
No, you can just tally it.
Chrissy wins four to three.
Okay, congratulations Chrissy. Thank you. You are a new treasurer. Um, we, in, again, as a unified district, we are able to essentially elect a secretary to take the minutes. And I would like a motion to elect Shelley Anderson as the secretary of.
First of all, do we have to finish up the?
Correct.
Closing?
We have to close out the treasurer.
Um, you just had a vote.
Oh, that was it?
Yep.
Okay, alright.
That was.
And, and you could give her the number of, um... Well, actually, no, you're right. It would, we have a person.
Right.
All in favor of Chrissy for treasurer.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That means a cleaner. Alright, can I have a motion to, um, assign Shelley Anderson, our secretary of duties for, uh, meetings?
I nominate Shelley Anderson. Second?
Okay. Lonnie and Jeremy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, um, committees. Again, as you know, committees are formed for the board so that they can look into certain aspects of either finance or buildings or whatever in much more detail, and then make recommendations to the board. They are not in themselves the ones making, um, the decisions, but they serve in an advisory, um, capacity, um, to the full board. Given I wasn't sure how it was going to go with officers tonight, I am only going to appoint two committees, partly because Jesse felt that we might need, um, these two committees before the next meeting. So, the other ones will be, um, will be, um, assigned at that point. So, um, jumping down the line here. We skipped, we skipped, um, board correspondent. Amy Johnson, if you would be willing to fulfill that position?
Sure.
And CISA seven board of control representative, who also serves as the delegate to the CISA convention. Chrissy, are you willing to continue that position?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Alright, now we'll get to the committees. So, I am going to, um, do building, grounds, and transportation tonight. And that will be, um, Lonnie Fennendell, he'll be chair, Chris Schley, and Chris Benish. And I'm also going to do policy and practice. That will be, um, Chrissy O'Connell as chair, Amy Johnson, and myself. The remaining committees that will be assigned next month will be finance, public relations and marketing, and the charter school. We will not assign, um, official safety committee. It can be an ad hoc one if we feel we need it. Um, I think a lot of those issues have been handled and probably building and grounds will be dealing with probably more of those kinds of safety kinds of things at this point. Okay. Delegate and alternate for the WASPA convention. I am going to nominate myself unless someone else is anxious to be the delegate. Is there somebody willing to be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay. So, I will be the delegate. Jeremy will be the alternate. I am hopeful that we can have a larger contingent going to school board convention this year. Part of the reason that I'm putting myself as the delegate is that it does take almost eight years after opening Wednesday, and there are some really good sessions that are also going on during that time. And so, I think especially with new members is that the time with the sessions is much better. That time that is spent. Okay. Moving on, I need a motion to retain the following depositories for school funds. Excuse me. Associated Bank, Nicolay Bank, Bank of Luxembourg, American Deposit Management Company, and the local government investment pool.
I'll move that.
Alright, motion made by Amy.
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris Schley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve Renning Lewis and Lacy and the WASPA attorneys for legal counsel to Algoona School District for school matters.
I'll move. Second.
Motion made by Lonnie, seconded by Chris Benish. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, setting time and dates for the regular board meetings. First, um, we had moved the time back to six, or up probably, you wanted to six o'clock to meet your names Lonnie, is that still?
Preferably.
Does that work for the rest instead of at three? Alright, we will keep it at six o'clock then. Dates, it's always going to be the fourth by our, um, by our policy. It's always the fourth Monday of the month, except when we change them officially at a meeting. And I was looking ahead, obviously, next month already is one that we have to do. So, that would be May twentieth. In October, we have, um, was there also July? July, July fifteenth. There is a conflict because our fearless leader Jesse will be on the out west trip, facing all sorts of exciting aspects. So, that will be July fifteenth. Then.
July fifteenth is a Tuesday?
Is it a Monday?
Monday.
It's a Monday, okay. So, that's the third Monday instead of the fourth, right?
Yep.
Okay. And then, October twenty-first would be the next one. And again, that is a, um, because of Jesse's schedule, um, he will be at some kind of.
Conference.
And then, December sixteen, because we have Christmas falling too close. So, that one is moved back. And then, the last one was March seventeen. I believe that has to do with our spring break.
Barb, what did you say for October?
Twenty-first.
Would you like me to go through the dates of all the months? I have them written here.
We have more changing than we have on the fourth Monday, don't we?
Well, there are twelve months in a year. We have five changes, yes.
Dates will be May twentieth, June twenty-fourth, July fifteenth, August twenty-sixth, September twenty-third, October twenty-first, November twenty-fifth, December sixteenth, January twenty-seventh, February twenty-fourth, March seventeenth, and April twenty-eighth.
Can you refresh my memory on what we did for the week of Thanksgiving for the school calendar? Because that eleven twenty-five is the Monday of Thanksgiving, the Monday of deer hunting.
Correct. So, that week, we are in school at Monday and Tuesday.
You're in school Monday, Tuesday, okay.
Jessica, can you repeat the September date, please?
Uh, September would be twenty-third.
Okay. So, we finished all of the reorg requirements. So, we will move then to board season for Chrissy.
We don't have a board correspondent, huh? One second, and Shelley, I'm gonna send this to you immediately so I don't think about it at a crazy time. So, um, I can't remember if I recapped last month, but the following board terms are up this year for the CISA seat. So, it's Mishikot, Reedsville, Sebastopol, and Southern Door. So, we do not have to worry about the Algoona seat, um, at the May meeting. Um, some updates for this month. The Head Start five-year monitoring review was being conducted last week. It's a week-long audit with that Head Start team. Um, a federal classroom review, digging into finance, like the most in-depth audit Head Start could be going through. Um, and they were, um, doing really well. The scores were improving even though the tenure on that team is really low. So, um, big kudos to that Head Start team. Um, the superintendent PAC meeting for April twenty-seven of the thirty-eight districts attended. Um, and that was with, um, local legislature representatives. So, it was, um, a lot of, um, representation from our government officials and a lot of good interaction. Then, I have a summary sheet here. Um, really cool data was presented on the youth apprentices in the CISA seven. Um, just some highlights. We have thirteen hundred, um, youth apprentice employees working for eight hundred ninety-six employers involving twenty-four schools across eighteen districts. And they have earned an average wage of fourteen dollars and forty-six cents. And, um, I have a cool number, eight point five million, but I don't know if that's annual wages that are being given out. I forgot to write down the detail on that. But I thought it was astonishing that we have that many high schoolers making that much money and interacting with our, our labor force. The job fair, um, I have really cool flyers. They were doing job fairs in Door County, and I think this might be something fun we would want to consider or something to revitalize our sub-list, to keep people going, let them know that we will help them get their certification, maybe do a fun job fair for bus drivers, whatever the needs might be. Um, so they were doing all sorts of little things. They popped up at the Lawless coffee shop. This one was at Java on Jefferson. So, something we might want to think about, um, maybe not for this school year anymore, but next year or even over the summer to, um, engage them. CISA can help with that, or my HR experience, I'm happy to just help with a, a fair and get that published. For those of you who see the CISA annual report, the format is changing. So, if you're used to seeing an eighty-page narrative and trying to read through that, just know that their new business, um, development director has changed it. It's gonna be more meaningful, more graphics, and not a, a slumber fest on eighty pages of reading. Um, and then, we have a May twenty-second reorg meeting for, um, CISA. So, that's a little bit later than we normally would have our CISA meeting within the month. And then, um, for anyone who would like one, I brought, um, little hearts. They handed these out at the CISA meeting. They're from the Little Heart Project. For those of you, um, who know Colleen Timm, she lost her son to suicide, um, about a year and two months ago. So, um, these are just reminding people that they are loved. There's a social media, um, stuff here. There's the nine eight eight to call for help. So, I have a whole pile of them. Grab your favorite color, take one, put it by your desk, wear it, um, just to think of Sam and to, if you need to give it away to somebody to remind them they are not alone. I can get more if we want some.
Okay. Thank you. We don't have a student here today. I don't have any misconceptions or rumors. Anyone sign in if you speak?
No.
Alright. My announcements. Welcome returning Chrissy. I'm glad that you, um, are continuing to be on the board. And welcome, brand-new members, Amy and Jimmy. Thank you for, um, running to serve in this important service for our community. The other thing is, there is a Beacon Award ceremony on April twenty-ninth, which is a week from today. And we, um, have, it's what we used to call the Business Industry Education, the BIE banquet. I don't know anybody if that makes it any, I think it's, it's run by the chamber. Anyway, um, Jesse is going to be recognized as is Pat Holland. Um, it is a dinner. Um, it is something that requires a ticket. If any board members are wanting to go, um, let Jesse know. I believe today might be the last day for him to get the ordering for tickets. But it would be nice if we can have a showing to give appreciation to Jesse and Pat since he was one of the people to be recognized.
So, I did my own RSVP based on our conversation last week? Okay.
I'll be doing the same tonight.
I can go here check off at the chamber and she will pay through the credit card.
Okay. Um, moving on to administration reports. Jesse?
Alright. Alright, for presentation tonight, uh, I try to keep this somewhat short because I know we've got some students here to present that are out in the hallway here. So, uh, we'll do an update on some district finances, talk about, uh, change for our life insurance plan that will be coming. Um, I will do a quick referendum update and then talk about snow days. So, turn it over to Amber, and she will do a finance update.
So, just a, a quick recap for the new members that are here. Every month, you're gonna see these slides with our percentages to show you where we're at in the budget versus our actuals for revenue and expenditure. I break them up into two groups. Our operating funds, which is the general fund, our special education fund, the food service fund, and community service fund. The community services is Packer Puffs, Wellness Center, middle school sports, those items. So far this year, we are doing fantastic. Everything is right on track. Some things that are coming up here, our total aids from the state for the year are a little, almost six million dollars. We have received, as of three thirty-one, forty-six, four million, six hundred thousand. So, we've got just, just shy of one point four million coming in, and then all the aids will be received for the year. So, we're doing really good there. There was an email that was sent out to all of the teachers last, well, a few weeks ago. And April fifteenth was the deadline for everyone to get their orders in for supplies for this year. So, we should start seeing those expenditure numbers tick up a little bit more for the general fund. The other funds that we have are, are debt funds. So, thirty-eight is debt that the school board issues on their own. We are max, our maximum amount we can issue that way is a million dollars. We are paying off the last hundred thousand of that debt in June. And then, referendum debt, this is voter-approved debt. So, we have, um, some borrowing that is going to be paid off in a few years. We only need to collect about three hundred thousand dollars more to make the full payments on that. And then, the new referendum debt that we'll be issuing this year that was just approved. And then, our long-term capital improvement fund. This is a fund that we set money aside for future capital needs. Um, there's not a huge balance in there, but every year, we try to add a little bit to it so that as things come, if we don't have a capital referendum like was just approved, then we can use that for some of those smaller items. And then, every quarter, you're gonna get this sheet that I handed out at the beginning of the meeting that tells you what our fund balances are and what our targets are for some of these. The balances go up and down all throughout the year. So, up on the slides here, you'll see just a chart that kinda shows the trend from year to year. So, you can see that this is the time of year where our balances are a little bit higher, but then they start dropping down. And that's due in large part to the timing of the aid payments from the state. Reimbursement for the special education fund, so that fund actually operates in the negative. Jesse, if you could go to the next slide. That's your special education fund. So, this fund is a reimbursement fund. We spend the money, then we submit our complaint, com- claims. Yes.
Sometimes I like to complain.
Everyone's head is very small. We submit our claims to the state, and then they reimburse us. So this fund does operate in the negatives, so it relies on the fund balance from the general fund to support it until we get those reimbursements in. So you should begin and end every year with zero, but all throughout the year, it'll be in the negatives. So the next fund is Fund Fifty. This is our food service fund. This fund is monitored a little bit more strictly by DPI. We are only allowed to have fifteen months of operating expenditures in fund balance reserves. Our balance is a little high at the moment. Um, this started to happen kind of with COVID, and I think it was because of the influx of money that came in to kind of help provide meals to families all throughout the, the COVID epidemic. So we have started to use some of those reserves to do some upgrades in the kitchen. There was a sink that needed to be replaced, it was blocking up a lot, and a few other things. So, um, I think Allison just filed this report just a couple of weeks ago with DPI, and we are back down below the required threshold, so we're doing good there. And then finally, our last fund is the community service fund. This is funded mainly by fees and some tax revenue. And it, again, is the Community Wellness Center. It's the biggest proportion of this probably. And then childcare, Packer Puffs, and middle school sports. Because our middle school sports are open to anyone in the community, so we do have students that come from St. Paul's to participate in middle school sports. So, and this, this fund balance did drop down a little bit. It was because of the purchase of the Pops building, but this year that will be paid back to the general funds. All in all, all of our fund balances are doing pretty good, and we've got a healthy situation. So then life insurance benefits. Uh, the district provides life insurance as a benefit to our employees, and we have been providing this through MetLife. It was a legacy plan, and over the last couple of years, MetLife has had quite a few payouts. So they did what's known as a book review, and they looked at the rates and what they were paying out and said, oh, we can't do this. So last year, they gave the district a forty percent premium increase, and this year it was just shy of a seventy percent premium increase that they were gonna give us.
Seven-zero?
Seven-zero.
Oh boy.
So, the, our M-three, our insurance brokers, helped us go out to the market and get quotes from different companies, MetLife included. And the standard is who we ended up going with, or we're asking you to choose to go with. They provided the best, um, timeframe. They gave us a three rate, three-year rate guarantee. MetLife would only give us one. And we are switching from a flat rate for employees and retirees. So our retirees can stay on the life insurance plan. They have to pay for their premiums, and that was part of what was driving that huge increases, those retirees. So this new plan with the standard is going to have two different rates, one for active employees and one for retirees. And like I said, they are giving us a three-year guarantee. So, the biggest impact of the change in coverage is going to be to the retirees' rates. They are going to see an increase. And we're gonna do a transition plan. Uh, Jessie and I will work on that, and we'll bring that to the board in May. And any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
Do retirees have this indefinitely, or does it term out at age sixty-five?
Nope, it's indefinitely. I actually was looking through some paperwork, and we had a retiring that was a hundred and one.
Yeah.
I, I had to do that, my math twice on that one.
Yeah, insurance companies never lose.
They don't like to. In this case, I think they were.
Yeah, well, so then they jack.
Yep, so they jack the rates up to cover their losses.
Yeah.
So we will bring to the May meeting, uh, transition plan for what that will look like. But we wanted to first have the board or bring a vote to switching from MetLife to Standard, so that's what we'll be doing tonight. Alright, some referendum updates, thank you, Amber. Um, I met with Baird Finance, um, along with Amber to review a finance timeline regarding the referendum. Um, included at your, um, seat tonight was the tentative timeline. Kevin Mullen is gonna be coming on May twentieth to our board meeting to discuss this in more detail. Um, but some important dates, just to kinda keep in the back of your mind, is that June twenty-fourth at the board meeting, um, the board will be asked to adopt the parameters for the finance resolutions. Um, then the work really starts in July. We'll go out for a bond rating, we'll put those notes out there for bids, basically. And then we'll lock in a final interest rate and sign the approved certificates. Our first payment will be due then on April first of two thousand and twenty-five for our new referendum. For more to come on that one. Um, met with Bayline Buildings, uh, last week to start beginning to look at the scope of projects. Um, we're trying to map out some projects that could actually take place over the summer, this summer yet. Um, and so we'll be working with them on that. Um, what I learned was, we can even start projects without the financing being secure right now. So, uh, we can start doing all this work, even though the finance side will do its work, um, into the summer, so. And then we also have a meeting coming up with McKinstry this Thursday to look at some energy efficiency projects. The last thing I have is snow day makeup. So it's probably been on the back of many parents' minds, um, and staff members. Uh, we had three snow days this year, January ninth, January twelfth, and April third. Um, if you total up the total number of minutes for those three days, it comes out to one thousand two hundred and eighty-one minutes. Um, DPI requires those specific hours you see. One thousand fifty hours for students in kindergarten through sixth grade, one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven hours of instruction for seventh through twelfth graders. So if I did the math correctly, um, and I checked it several times to make sure we were right, but, um, you take out those three snow days, we had one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight hours of instruction, or will have this year. So we do meet the required number of minutes for the school year. So we do not have to add any additional hours to our school day or any additional days to our calendar, which is welcome news. And that is all Amber, so.
Getting any on a happy note. Alright, moving on to elementary D I report.
Alright, if you don't mind, I am gonna skip down to the second item underneath my report and welcome in our DI team. Certain movement, if you don't mind. Um, as you may or may not be aware, we have two elementary DI teams that will be going to Global's in May. Uh, Mrs. Kingerzki is, or, is, oh, sorry, one.
One and a high school.
One and a high school, sorry. Uh, Mrs. Kingerzki is our elementary school guidance counselor. She is the coach of the DI team at the elementary school that we're going. So she came to me and said, could we perform for this board? Mrs. Kingerzki, is this enough space?
I think so.
Okay.
We're gonna go this way, right? Oh, do you want me to, do you wanna come in like you do earlier? Okay, so we have lots of stuff. So this is the fourth and fifth grade DI team. Their name is Donut, You Know Our Name. And they are competing at Global's at the end of May in Kansas City, Missouri. And, um, well, and that's because they, at State, they took first place this year. And they also had the highest instant challenge score as well. Uh, they're doing a scientific challenge this year called Blast From The Past. Um, part of, um, for part of this challenge, they had to create a puppet. They also had to have an artifact. Um, it had to include an archaeological investigation that, um, had theatrical effect and leads to a finding. Um, they also had to create two signature items, one which will be the supercomputer and one that's the prop holder that Hazel's in front of. Um, everything they did today was created by the kids. Everything they came up with, it was all on their own. So I feel like that's a really awesome part of DI, is it's all their ideas and all their own work. It's all original. Um, could they introduce, they, they wanted to introduce themselves. So do you wanna say your names?
Uh, Grayson, you, you start. Oh, okay. My name is Grayson Tivon.
My name is Gate Ray.
Chase Kingerzki.
Connor Fleischman.
Hazel Krieger.
Okay. And then a part of it too is they have eight minutes total to do, um, to do their skip, which solves their problem. So they have to like set up in that eight times and perform in the eight minutes as well. So this is how they come in, is, um, the appraisers or the judges go, um, team, don't not you know your name? Are you ready?
We don't know, but we think we are.
Your eight minutes starts now. The board may remove. Okay, you guys can pause for a second.
What a lovely day for a donut from the Bitter Rock Cafe.
Here's your donut, would you like a box?
Yes, please. Oh, look at that new car poster. Ooh, it's three hundred percent off. Ow. Hey, it'd be a lot easier if we, um, donuts turned cars off to move better.
Great, what should we call them?
Oh, well, well, wheels.
What's your little baby?
How about wheels? Yabba dabba doo! Take a sign. Oh no, it's stuck. Oh, well, I guess somebody a thousand and thirty years later is gonna be finding it.
I think I have plenty of donuts.
A thousand million years later, the Jetsons went to Machu Picchu.
Beep beep, you have arrived at your destination.
Isn't Machu Picchu nice, Elroy?
I guess. It would be a lot nicer if it wasn't so cold and cloudy.
I'm going back inside before I, I put there. Why do we go up for?
Why should I go outside and get my dress ready?
Because in the May city, you can't get any fresh air.
Fine, come on, kids.
I don't wanna come.
Mom, are you okay?
Yes, I'm okay, but what's sticking out of the ground?
This was the first rule that ever existed, and the Jetsons somehow found it.
Wow. I see it's scary by pulling out of the ground.
Wow, I can't believe this is on the ground for a thousand million years. This would be a crazy finding of a single artifact taken from the Earth. This person says it's the first rule studied in Eastern Europe and was made of wood. But this rule looks a lot older than the other one. Why don't we take this back to our plan room and test science so we know what rock is?
Sure, why not?
I have to bring it back when I have to. Come on, you rock. And finally. Bye, bye. There's like five of them. They're down to a pulp right now.
Yeah, you've got wild imagination.
I know.
Anyway, break off a piece of the wheel, Elroy.
It's not working.
Let me try.
You can try.
I got it. This looks like an igneous rock.
What's an igneous rock?
Oh, I know what an igneous rock is. An igneous rock is a rock that shows obsidian and granite, which are both mineral flammable.
Let's put this under optical microscope.
I'll do it.
Wow. Let me see it, I wanna see it. Oh my gosh, it's amazing. It looks so smooth, and almost looks like crystalized. I think, I think it's obsidian.
You're too short, Elroy.
Everybody stop, apologize to Judy right now.
We are deeply sorry, Judy.
I'm okay. Anyway, somebody print out a sheet.
I mean, you said I was too short.
Fine, I'll do it. I think the printer's having a mental breakdown.
Yeah.
Okay, so just, just pretend I have a sheet, 'cause, um, the printer is having a mental breakdown. Okay, first, let's do a streak test. Okay, first let's do a streak test to determine what color the rock is. The streak is white. Next, check.
Glass test, the glass is a scratch and no dust. Um, hey Judy, grab a magnet, we're gonna do a magnet test.
Nothing's happened, nothing's all stayed in our computer.
I'm not too short for this.
Yeah, right. The supercomputer says.
A hundred percent obsidian.
Wow, that's so cool. I feel like a geologist.
Me too. Same. Um, and so the Jetsons went back to Orbit today to tell me, the mayor, about their discovery. They got awards, they got a book, thousands, even movies. But to this day, people still wonder what happened to Flintstone.
Time!
Well done.
I see it. It was on the ground.
Okay, so, that works. This, this sheet is white, not any.
Smart thinking, Judy, and the computer.
Also, um, if the, um, we, if we didn't forget to put it on, the obsidian piece would be on like this, and then they would like break it off, 'cause it could actually be the magnet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a problem.
We don't need any more reports, that's it.
That's what I was gonna say. If you can call it a meeting, that's all we need.
Absolutely.
Can you bring the phone everywhere? Yeah. Alright, um, I'm gonna move back to the first thing, under my agenda items, just April bright spots. Um, for those of our new board members, whenever there's something at the elementary school that it's just, you know, we got a lot of little things going on, I just kinda throw it into a category called April bright, or bright spots. So April bright spots, it's been a very busy month. Um, we've had a lot of fun this month. We wrapped up our march into Noganda's PTS fundraiser. Um, we raised just over five thousand dollars with that. Um, so with the, with the money that was raised from that, we're gonna further expand our play actions on our playgrounds, so including a sandbox. Um, we've talked about. Um, we've talked about painting some lines on the laptop for the kids, just kind of um offering more of a variety. So we are very grateful to the PTS for their continued support with that. Um, the PTS also provided all of the students and staff at our school with glasses, so that we could view the solar eclipse earlier this month. That was really, really cool. Um, the kids had a lot of fun, teachers probably had more fun. Uh, but it was a really, really great opportunity for everybody. Um, just last week, Thursday, 4K in kindergarten held their spring concert and family night. Um, it was insect themed, um, so the teachers planned a bunch of different family activities, where the kids went on a bug hunt around the school. Um, there were some games, there was a snack making station, and then it concluded with the students singing about seven or eight songs on stage. So, um, kudos to our teachers for putting that together, especially in Mrs. Shaper's absence. They kind of took that on themselves and just went with it, because that's something that we value is just that parent engagement and interaction. So we wanted to make sure that that still happened, even though Mrs. Shaper wasn't there to help us plan that. Um, earlier this month, right after we got back from spring break, we were able to watch a wonderful piano duet performance by our very own um David Robertson and Mr. Mike Swinburne. Um, Sarah Hines, who is filling in for Mrs. Shaper, helped to coordinate that. So they played a bunch of songs, kind of educated us on a few things. Um, and then Mrs. Hines brought some of that learning back into the music classes that followed the week. So that was pretty awesome. Um, students in fifth and sixth grade attended the Kiwanis Symphony Orchestra Concert. Um, they traveled to the Fox Cities PAC to, our fifth and sixth grade also traveled to the Fox Cities PAC to watch a mariachi band performance. Um, and then next week, our fifth grade class is going to be traveling to Madison to visit the Capitol and the Henry Vitus Zoo. So a lot of fun things is a very, it's been a very fast month overall. And then just dropping down to the final thing, under my agenda item, state assessments. So this Friday marks the final date for all of our state assessments district wide, two polls. We um have wrapped up the board exam, we wrapped up the ACT, we've got a couple of pre-ACT makeups in ninth and tenth grade. Um, and then just a few students who have yet to take the DLM, or finish taking the DLM, which is the alternate state assessment. And then we are good to go for the year, for 2024, so that's all I had.
Questions for Katie?
Yes, what a busy, what a busy month.
Me is no different, so we'll have May bright spots too.
And PTS is selling meat now, if anyone wants hamburgers and hot dogs, feel free to contact Maggie or really.
Alright, moving on then, middle school, high school principals report, Dave.
Alright, so I am, last month, remember, we talked a little bit about the business department today, we talked a little bit about our art teacher and uh some of the projects that she has going on. So this year, new to us is Deb Moorebacher. Um, and right off the top of her list, what she included was Youth Art Month, which is sponsored by Artbeat. And I had to look up Artbeat, cause I kind of knew what it was, but I just wanted everybody to know that it is actually the first and only 501(c)(3) arts organization in Kiwanis County created to develop awareness of and sustain the local art scene. And so in March, they sponsor Youth Art Month, or YAM, and that's something our school has participated in a couple of uh years now. This year, we had fifteen different students artwork on display, there were twenty total pieces. One student placed first of all the schools that participated. There were two students that earned honorable mention, one student had an offer for a purchase, and one student was awarded an art scholarship, so uh Deb totally is good about that. Um, and then she's learned a new skill that she brought with her this year, uh with some help from Nicole Herbst, who's the art teacher at Sturton Bay. Um, they collaborated and brought felting to the school, and that was a new uh media that our students have not used for, used before. And the students enjoyed it, there's a lot of really uh interesting pieces that were put up in the hallways and and obviously some didn't get put up. And some of those even made their way into the youth art month. Clay is one of Deb's specialties. Uh, she taught it previously at Hands on Art Studio up in Door County, and also at one of her previous uh employment areas. Um, and she's excited about the uh 3D sculptures and some of the uh projects that are in progress there. And then on Fridays, um Deb is working on something called Teaching for Artistic Behavior, which it means that kids that are maybe in a specific media, if they're like a drawing class, or if they're in a clay class, she just mixes it up and they're allowed to choose a project of, uh, they're allowed to choose a project. And that way, the child becomes the artist and the room just becomes the studio, and it nurses creativity and promotes positive classroom uh ethics. And she's also helped decorate the library with uh some of the student art projects. And one of the uh projects that she undertook when she first got here was getting our curriculum, uh curriculum aligned. And so she worked really closely with um another art teacher and just uh just did a complete uh revamp of our, our art curriculum as far as scope and sequence goes. So that's what's going on in the art department. Um, want to highlight also the yearbook and the work that my wife, Sarah Robertson, and a group of students that are working on that are doing. One of the great things about yearbook, besides being a sort of a history of our year, um that gets put into the libraries and into our own vaults and into kids' hands and families' hands, is that it does allow students to get a hands-on experience with graphic arts, teaches them responsibility, teaches them how to do photography, how to do uh some writing, a lot of editing, a lot of design, things like that. And then finally, I just want to talk about our partnership with MCC. Um, as many of you are aware, we've had an ongoing partnership with MCC for a lot of years. And uh I, I think that it was time, and so did MCC, that it was time to sort of redefine what that uh partnership looked like. And so we've uh met several times, Tanya Jones, Courtney Zimmerman, Amanda Havel, and then Courtney Schmidt and myself have met a couple of times. And really looked at what, what do we want to get out of that partnership, how do we revitalize that partnership, and how do we expand that partnership? So one of the things that has taken place is Courtney and our um, our youth apprenticeship rep, who's Lauren Baumann, have gone there now to work with MCC and find ways that we can expand our partnership and expand um not only at their facility, but also in our facility, the work that, that we do together. And our hope, our hope of there is to uh, is to get students interested in what's going on over there and help them to realize um the opportunities that they have right in their backyard, so to speak. And that's all I have.
Questions for Dave?
Do you have any youth at MCC right now?
Yeah, there, there's several. Um, I don't have the exact number for you right now, Christine. I know this summer in particular, there's quite a few that they have been able to hire. So when they, uh, when they hire MCC, they have um some challenges as far as liability goes and high-speed equipment. There's a new division that they've sort of opened, um, that it does not have those same liability issues, so they've been able to hire uh some summer employment there. I think we might have a couple other students over there also. But as far as the youth apprenticeship, we don't, we're not in that, that company yet with that. So that's a great opportunity for us to grow.
Any other questions? Alright, we'll keep moving. Pathfinder, Elgoma Venture Academy, and Pack a Pub childcare report.
Yeah, I'll start with ABA, and I'm actually gonna start with something that's not on here, cause Avio just texted me something pretty cool. So, um, we had a team from ABA um participate in what they called the No Code Hackathon. Um, it's a hackathon for social change, which is through the WIN Network, which is the Well Being in the Nation Network. Um, they've had two weeks, and I'll just read the overview, cause it's kind of confusing, but two weeks to um come up with a plan. So the No Code Hackathon for Social Change will encourage teams to prototype different ideas that help changemakers identify and fix the broken parts of the system that cause unfairness. So, um, we learned about this kind of really late in the game, cause it was um posed to college teams around the nation. Um, but through our connections, we were able to submit a team through ABA, and Abby Gopf just texted me, um, and they won against all of the college teams. So I'll have more information for that, or, or more information for you at the next board meeting, but that's super exciting.
That's congratulations.
Cause there are a lot of pretty high-level teams in the hackathon model. Um, yeah, it's pretty cool. Um, our kids just returned from their spring trip to the Dells. They um had to plan everything within a certain budget, so they planned where they stayed, travel, all the activities that they did, um, and went to Devil's Lake on the way down and hiked like seven miles around the lake. Um, so that was exciting. We usually like to do a spring trip, just to kind of wrap up the year. Um, we got twenty kids that went, half stayed due to sports and other reasons, so that was fun. Um, we had one student apply to the Rising Phoenix program for next year, we had one student currently in it, um, and they got accepted. So as a next year, we'll have two students in Rising Phoenix, which is great. And then the year-end project showcase is going to be uh May twenty-second from forty-six. So mark your calendars, you can come see what our kids have been doing this semester um for their projects. Pathfinder, um, the students competed in a mac and cheese cooking challenge. Um, they did create all different recipes using mac and cheese, so one of them was a BLT stuffed with mac and cheese, as well as peanut poppers stuffed with mac and cheese, which were delicious. Um, students are still working, or they're partnering with VIP to work on a sexual assault awareness project for their art show, and it's actually pretty cool. Um, they put different stories on plates and busted the plates, and I turned it into art, and I don't remember what the word is, but they painted them different colors each for a different letter, and they're building all the pieces in, it's pretty, pretty powerful. Um, they are also continuing their partnership with ESI, they had them over right before Easter and made Easter cookies with their clients, as well as um did collage, made some jars with collages on them. And then at Pack of Pups, we have uh openings in the baby room. We have two right now, all of our babies are starting to turn one, the one we started last May. So we're all transitioning into our one-year-old rooms, we have two openings actually in the baby room.
That's sort of unusual, isn't it?
Very, yeah, we're a jam pack for the summer though, so that's gonna be, that's gonna be right.
Yeah.
Oh, also, forgot, um, so there's always been a barrier, I guess, at the childcare, kids are, have not been able to participate in summer school in the past, because there's been no transportation, we don't offer transportation for summer school. So we are looking into different options, so that our kids who attend the childcare can also attend summer school this year, or um the Jump Start Program. Um, so it's a really silly barrier to me, why wouldn't you be able to go to summer school?
Now that we own that childcare, we should make it happen.
Yeah, and it's not that many kids, so.
Yeah.
Or we could have a walking school, so.
Questions for Katie?
How do you become a judge for the mac and cheese challenge?
You just let me know.
Alright, moving on, specialized wellness report, Marie.
I just wanted to do a little staff update. Um, Jamie Hannah, which is one of our peer professionals at the elementary school, uh has been out on maternity leave since late January, she had a daughter. Um, she's returning on Thursday. Uh, Liz Sawyer has been filling in her place. Uh, she came to us with some previous peer professional experience, has been doing amazing. Um, so grateful for her, um, but obviously, we're very excited to have Jamie back. Um, Kayden Shaw is expecting any day now, her last day will be this Thursday. And that's gonna spice some things up at the elementary school a little bit, because Sarah Hines, who has been filling in for Megan Shaper, is actually gonna be taking over Kayden Shaw's maternity leave until the end of the school year. Um, we also have another specialized teacher expecting in August, it's the year of the babies. Um, Alana Young is expecting um at the end of the summer, so we're going to be looking at maternity leave options for her as well. Um, we also continue to have a vacancy in our middle school, which um I'm excited to announce, we have some interviews set up for this week. Um, so hopefully, we will be able to fill that position for the fall. Um, additionally, we have one of our, if you remember, we have three speech-language therapists right now. One of them did actually announce that she's planning to move back home, um, she's from the Milwaukee area. So that will bring us down to two, which will um likely affect our partnership with Kiwanis. Amy Korchart has been spending Tuesdays and part of her Thursdays helping support in Kiwanis contracted through the both districts. So that will likely affect that, but I've been in communication with Kiwanis and possibly CISA VII to see if we can share some contracted speech-language services. So we're not short speech language, um, like we have been in the past, but it'll just look a little bit different. Um, and then for our Elgoma Community Wellness Center, um, Dave Robertson's daughter, Chloe, has been a wonderful employee um at the front desk, but she will be graduating and has some plans for the summer. She announced that her last day will be on May twentieth, which means we'll be internally posting for the students to fill that front desk position. And Whitney Ebert and I are planning to interview in early May. Um, and lastly, our District Health and Wellness Committee, we actually met right before this meeting. Um, we've got some fun things in store for staff as we close out the school year. Um, one being a partnership with Jamie Schmiling from Roots Yoga. She is going to be coming into the Wellness Center on Mondays, um, with the exception of Memorial Day. So four classes, she's going to come in and uh teach for our staff members at like a low cost, so that will be very exciting. Um, Whitney Ebert is also planning to host a HIT class for the community and staff members, creatively named HIT with Wit. So that'll be Tuesdays and Thursday mornings in May, um, I think she said, like five thirty AM, but um, mark your calendar for that. We're also gonna be having that at a very low cost, I think we decided on five dollars per class, and there'll be a discounted rate if you pay for the um sixteen sessions upfront. So just a little skin in the game to hold you accountable. Um, we're also hoping to organize a pickleball tournament for staff, it's been kind of a, a hot topic, um, especially in the community. So hopefully, that will be in the works soon, but um, just some fun things that are in the works.
Sounds good. Questions for Marie?
Amber said I should tell what HIT stands for. High intensity interval treatment, so if you're not familiar with HIT.
I had to ask her earlier, so. Yeah, and I know what it means, but there's no way I'm doing this.
Five thirty's more.
I'm trying to spend yoga on my days, that's.
Competition sounds way more fun.
Okay, no questions for Marie? Um, we get on to committee reports. We had a policy and practice committee. Um, we have caught up with our policies, which last year, we were working really hard to catch up on some that had been piling up in terms of revisions from Miola. Again, for the new board members, we use Miola, um, who puts, who has the policies for us, and make sure that we are legally in line with everything that we need to be given through statutes, as well as keeping up to date with the new things and changes. Our policy committee, um, when revisions come through, we look at them and make sure that we are making um them fit our um district. Um, and, but we, we don't really change the substance of it, because if we start changing the substance, then we might be getting into legal territory. So there is some limitation to um what we are able to do. But anyway, um, we did go through um some policies, and there was um a new one, um, a few that were revised, and some with no changes. The ones that um had anything significant, we always put in for everyone to take a look at. Um, if the revision was basically just like a name change of the title or something, we don't bother to have the board have to look at all of that. That's why you don't have all of them. Um, were there any questions or concerns about any of the ones that were in your packet? Okay, then we will be um looking for Google those later in action items. Then Board of Campusers met April third and April eighth. You wanna?
We met on the third, we verified what we thought was the entire vote, and only to find out that Town of Antape had found four ballots. So we met again on the eighth, verified those ballots, uh, obviously, it didn't change anything, and everything was submitted as necessary.
Alright, and then the special school board meeting, April ninth, um, that was related to a student issue. That was related to a student issue. So a quorum of the board was present to be there. Decision was made unfortunately to for an expulsion of the student, but with the administrative administration directive to work with the family on ways to allow the student to continue their education. And other specific items for discussion? We have done a staff appreciation lunch for our staff. It's sort of a thank you from the board for the wonderful staff we have. And it's morphed through the years from where the board was cooking outside and then serving to having it brought in, and we were serving it. And it was after school for a while, but in terms of having everyone be able to attend the after-school because of sports and all of that, it seemed like a lot of staff weren't able to attend. So what we have done in recent years, and I believe well-received, is that we have a lunch brought in to both school locations. And this year, it's Staff Appreciation Week falls in May?
May 6th of the 10th.
May 6th of the 10th. I think we've done it on Wednesdays before. I mean, what day would work? What day would be best for the school?
For the elementary school, any day but Friday would be good.
Okay, how about the high school?
Eighty every day.
We don't eat on Fridays.
PTS is doing, they will still lunch for us.
We're doing Mo's Catering Taco Bar, so you don't want to give them Taco Bar. That's Friday. May 10th.
They did contact Mo's also to see if they would be available. They are available May 8th at Wednesday.
And I think, what if we have them do lunch?
Chicken and tips, I believe it was.
And I think that one opens. What we try and do is have any board members that can attend, we split of those who are available between the two schools during the timeframes that the food is going to be there. And part of the other recognition is we give out certificates for five-year, 10-year, 15-year employment. So shall we just settle on a date? Does Wednesday work?
Yes.
Okay, so let's say May 8. And what time works best at the elementary school? It seems like, is it 11 that we start?
Yeah, I think we do 11 till like 12:45ish to cover up the lunch.
And how about... And that's in the little comments area? And then at the high school, what works best time-wise?
Our first lunch starts at 11:38, and then it goes, there's a little gap, then the second lunch ends at 1:02 or 1:05.
All right, so we can figure out among the board who can go to what school? And that is, when it's here at the high school, are we still doing it over by the wellness?
In the Wellness Center, I think it worked well in the past.
So that would be Wellness Center, Adrian, for the high school.
I'll go to the elementary school. It's meat pickup day that day too.
Everyone can look at their calendars now. You can plan on us giving you some lunches then. Okay, moving on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of March 18, 2024, Policy and Practice Committee meeting minutes of April 8, 2024, Board of Canvassers meeting minutes of April 3, 2024, and April 8, 2024, and the Special School Board meeting minutes of April 9, 2024. Second? Motion made by Chris Bennett, second by Chrissy. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that have been presented to us.
So, second.
Motion made by Lonnie, seconded by Chris Sly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the math interventionist gifted and talented teacher job description.
So moved.
Second. Second, was that Jeremy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the standard as Elgoma School District's carrier of life insurance.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Chris Bennett, motion. Second by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the contract with Northeast Wisconsin Youth Apprenticeship, N-E-W-Y-A Services Agreement. Jeremy and...
Second.
And Lonnie. Any questions or discussion with that?
Is there a difference between anything 6 was offering? Except we used to go with 6?
More local. They support more with the financial piece, doing some of the background of the paperwork. So no 7, CISA 7 always offered this support years ago when the district entered into the contract with CISA 6. So they've really built up their staff to the point where they can now provide these services.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve DI to travel out of state to attend global tournament in Kansas City, Missouri.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Chrissy, seconded by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the new NEOL policy, 6061.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Chris Sly, seconded by Chris Bennett. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the revised NEOL policies, 0100, 2250, 2413, 3431, 4431, 5517, 5610, 6325, 6610, 7540, 7544, 8120, 8407, 8700, 9130, and 9140.
So moved.
Motion made by Jeremy, seconded by Chris Bennett. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I need a motion to approve the NEOL policies with no changes, 0122, 0144.3, 0171.3, 2460.03, 5610, 7440, 8310, and 8330, and 8431.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Amy, seconded by Chrissy.
Barb, I got a question.
Yes.
Looks like 5610 is listed in both, number eight and number nine.
Oh, good catch. Is it verified?
It is our suspension and expulsion policy, so it would be with the revised.
Okay, so we have already... Thank you for taking that. We have already included it in a previous motion, so...
And we should update that in the minutes then? It's listed twice in there too. Good catch, Chris.
We will not be including it in this motion. It was included and revised appropriately.
It's listed in minutes twice too.
Oh, you mean in minutes, okay. All right. I don't remember at this point, do I have a motion?
It was Amy and Chrissy.
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? All right, then I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statutes and 35 subsection 1(c) for the purposes of higher staffing and content.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Chrissy, seconded by Chris Bennett. Is a roll call, both Chris Bennett, Jeremy, Amy.
Yes.
Yes.
Chris, I...
Yes.